Good evening and welcome to the March 26, 2018, meeting of the Florissant City Council. Will you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Pugano.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Syam.
Lee.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Childs.
Here.
Hanky.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the meeting minutes of March 12 and the executive meeting minutes of March 14, 2018? Hearing Councilman Lee moves to approve the minutes seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is Police Department commendations. The first commendations are citizens commendations.
Can we start reading or you want to say something first?
You want to say something?
Yeah. So first, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing us to be here tonight for these commendations. Tonight, we're going to recognize 13 officers for outstanding performance and their dedication to the Florissant Police Department and our residents. In addition, we're going to also recognize three outstanding citizens for heroic acts that they were involved in, one of which was the manager at Chomis during our shooting incident, where he actually took the gun from the suspect and actually held on to him until we arrived. And then we had two other gentlemen here that actually saved the life of a young man on the highway, on Highway 270, in a very serious accident. So we're going to recognize them, both those guys also tonight. And I want to thank the families for being here also.
I just want to commend all these citizens for their assistance and every one of our uniformed officers for the excellent work that they do carrying on the tradition of high caliber police work, making us one of the safest cities in the world. Thank you.
Okay, the first commendation is for Cody Davis. On March 3, 2018, Mr. Davis was in the process of towing a vehicle from Interstate 270 near Washington when he observed a two-car crash in the eastbound lanes. Mr. Davis immediately notified Officer Kirchhoff of the accident and raced across the westbound lanes of the highway, jumped over the center divider to reach the vehicles which were on fire. Once Mr. Davis reached the vehicles, he found that the male driver was severely injured and trapped in his burning vehicle. Mr. Davis was able to free him and then pull him from the burning vehicle to safety. Because of his quick actions and disregard of his own safety, he saved a life. The Florissant Police Department would like to officially commend his heroic actions. The next one is for Matthew Miller. On March 3, 2018, Mr. Miller was driving on Interstate 270 near Washington when he observed a tow truck driver attempting to extricate a driver from a burning vehicle. Without hesitation, Mr. Miller stopped his vehicle and ran to the aid of the rescue of the driver trapped in the burning vehicle. Mr. Miller then began to render assistance to the driver of the burning vehicle until he was transported to the hospital. Because of his quick actions and disregard of his own personal safety, he saved a life. The Florissant's Police Department would like to officially commend his heroic actions. Next one is for Mr. Joel Hahn. On February 7, 2018, the Florissant Police Department responded to the Chomis restaurant regarding an active shooter. When the officers arrived, they discovered that the one victim was critically wounded and the other one had a bullet wound in the arm. The assailant was disarmed but still on the premises. As the investigation continued, it was determined that Mr. Hahn had stopped the shooter from doing further harm and that he had talked the suspect into putting down his weapon. Mr. Hahn was able to get the suspect to move to another part of the establishment where he talked to him calmly. Because of his quick actions and disregard of his own safety, Mr. Hahn assisted in preventing further harm to those present. Mr. Hahn was then able to convince the suspect to wait until the arrival of our officers. The Florissant Police Department would like to officially commend his heroic actions in diffusing the situation and assisting the arrest of the suspect. Officer Kirchhoff, Officer Kiefer, Detective Monahan, and Detective Bussen. On February 7, 2018, Officers Kirchhoff and Kiefer and Detective Monahan and Bussen responded to the active shooter call at the Chomis restaurant. Upon their arrival, disregarding their own personal safety, they entered the restaurant knowing the suspect was still inside. Officers Kirchhoff and Kiefer began life-saving techniques to the two victims. Detectives Monahan and Bussen were able to locate the shooter and take him into custody without incident. Subsequently, the firearm used in the crime was located and secured by these investigators. Due to these officers' detective and professional and courageous performance of duty, the suspect was arrested and warrants were later issued by the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for secondary murder and armed criminal action. They were hereby officially commended. Officer Swope, Officer Brockmire, and Officer Fletcher. On January 3, 2018, while on patrol and conducting investigations for felony warrants, Officer Brockmire and Officer Fletcher discovered that a subject wanted for two counts of burglary lived in the area. It was also known to these officers that there had been several auto thefts in the area where he had description of the suspect. With this information, Officer Fletcher and Officer Brockmire and Officer Swope went to the address of the subject with felony warrants to make the arrest attempt. After arriving at the residence, they were given permission to enter the residence and remove the suspect. While in the residence, items were discovered that matched the description of the suspect in the auto thefts. Through interviews with the suspect, he made a full confession and warrants were obtained. For these officers' actions in identifying and removing felony from our streets and neighborhoods, they are hereby commended. On February 16, 2018, Officer Summers was on her way to teach dare classes when she observed a vehicle matching the description of a broadcasted of a wanted vehicle in connection with an attempted armed robbery of an armored vehicle in the 2100 block of North Highway 67. While observing the vehicle parked at a business at 3200 block of Parker Road, Officer Summers was able to obtain the license information, notify dispatch personnel, and request assistance. Upon arrival of assisting units, she and the other officers were able to arrest the driver and two other suspects which matched the description of the robbers. Officer Summers' search incident to arrest resulted in recovery of a firearm and articles used to cover the faces of the suspects. The St. Louis County Prosecutor's Office issued charges of an attempted robbery and attempted criminal action. Due to Officer Summers' excellent observation skills, quick actions, and professional conduct, three dangerous criminals have been removed from the streets of Florissant. She is hereby officially commended. On March 1, 2018, Detective Osmer and Edwards received information that there was a subject selling heroin at an address on New Hall's Ferry. Upon their arrival at the location, they witnessed a hand-to-hand narcotics transaction. As the detectives approached the sole occupant of the vehicle, they observed a firearm next to him on the seat. Although the crowd was gathering, they were able to extract the noncompliant suspect and secure the loaded firearm. Further investigations revealed that a vehicle contained a moderate amount of fentanyl capsules. Later, the detectives learned that the suspect had multiple felony warrants outstanding and was currently on probation for other felony crimes. Because of their diligent and professional police work, a dangerous felon was removed from the streets of Florissant. They are officially commended. Sergeant Coder, Officer Bethan, and Officer Kirchhoff. On March 5, 2018, Sergeant Coder, Officer Kirchhoff were directed to a motel at 300 block of Dunn Road. When they arrived, a witness advised them that a black male entered the business with a handgun and took cash from the business and two cellphones. As the investigation continued, Sergeant Coder and Officer Bethan were able to track one of the cellphones to a residential area in North St. Louis County. With the assistance of Officer Kirchhoff, they identified the suspect vehicle, which was registered to a residence in the residential area. Because of the officers' teamwork, they located the suspect and recovered a handgun, the cellphone, and cash in the robbery. As their investigation continued, they identified and arrested the second suspect. Interviews then revealed the pair had committed five additional robberies in the St. Louis County area. Due to their excellent police work and diligent follow-up investigation, a pair of dangerous robbers have been taken off the streets of the city of Florissant in St. Louis County, and they are hereby officially commended. On February 6, 2018, Officer Cushing observed a vehicle traveling south on North New Florissant Road that did not have a front license plate. Officer Cushing initiated the traffic stop and discovered that the driver had several outstanding warrants. After taking the subject into custody, he conveyed him to the station and conducted an interview where he learned of narcotics trafficking in the city of Florissant. With this information, the detectives in the mobile unit were able to obtain a search warrant. The search warrant resulted in the seizure of 74 capsules of heroin and several weapons that had been reported stolen from an ATF agent. Due to Officer Cushing's tenacity and resolve, a six-time conviction felon was removed from the streets of Florissant. He is hereby officially commended.
The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue not necessarily on the agenda this evening. Please remember, this is not a question-and-answer time, but we would be happy to speak with you after the meeting. And Mr. Hustle, you don't have any?
No cards.
Well, there we go. Well, we'll move right along to the next item on the agenda is communications, of which there are none. And we'll move to public hearings. We have public hearing number 1803010. It was postponed from the last meeting, so we will now reopen this public hearing for additional comments. Is the petitioner... There he is. Good evening.
Good evening. How is everybody doing?
Good, thank you.
And we'd like to send our condolences to the loss of your father.
Please state your name and address.
Anthony Bolson. Live at 132 West Florissant.
You want to move your mic up or take it out? I know you like to take it out.
You know I like to walk, so, okay, here we go.
It's all yours.
So how's it going today?
Good.
Good. So we're back to see where we are and where we're going from here.
Mr. Hustle?
As promised, Mr. Bolson, I contacted the county councillor's office, spoke with them on a number of occasions, sent a rather long email to them, and the best way I can characterize it is I did not get a sufficient response from them. My speculation is that the reason I didn't get a sufficient response from them is because there still is some confusion at their end. We certainly have spoken to the same clerk, Michelle, who continues to be rather adamant that she not only could but would issue permits to you if the city allows the cigar bars a special use permit and then adopts a Clean Air Act. And as the mayor and council know, I prepared a memorandum to the city council recommending that this go-forward. We don't... I can't predict, seriously, what St. Louis County is going to do. I hope my point to them is, I'm sure the same point you would make to them, you want to be treated just like the other cigar bars are throughout St. Louis County, Ferguson, Chesterfield, all of them. I couldn't agree more. Agree wholeheartedly with you. So, my recommendation is that the city council make a legislative decision. Two things. One would be to amend the zoning code to allow within the HB Business District a special use permit for a cigar bar, contingent, of course, upon the adoption of a Clean Air Act. And your city clerk and I have prepared legislation, both for the special use permit and for the adoption of a Clean Air Act. It will mirror St. Louis County's Clean Air Act, with the exception being that the cigar bars would be allowed within the city of Florissant without the qualification that St. Louis County has, which is they had to exist prior to 2011 or '12. I apologize, I forget which year it is. So, I think that's where we are.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay. Mr. Caputa?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yes, we... These other bars that are throughout St. Louis County, did they enact their own Clean Air Act? Mr. Hustle, if you...
Say that again, Jeff, I'm sorry.
What's proposed are our first reading tonight about adopting a Clean Air Act just specifically for the city.
Correct.
Has there been any other municipalities where they have cigar bars have adopted the same ordinance?
They've adopted similar ordinances, not the same as ours. For example, the city of Ferguson adopted an ordinance, and I spoke to the city attorney for the city of Ferguson, who happens to be my partner as well, I'm happy to say. And their ordinance is much broader than what we are proposing, but it clearly does allow cigar bars. I did not check on the city of Chesterfield or the city of Sunset Hills, which, as Mr. Bolson correctly pointed out along with Mr. Lum, those municipalities similarly have allowed cigar bars. So I didn't go back and check them. Karen and I worked on it on Thursday and Friday, and, again, we believe that this will carve out the exception for cigar bars to accomplish this purpose. If the city council wants to do more than that, we can talk about it. I wouldn't recommend it, because, again, cigar bars is the only thing that I'm aware of that St. Louis County is allowing under their exemptions with a few exceptions.
Thank you. And, no, also, I know I requested the bars and the names and addresses of the other bars throughout St. Louis County. I have not received that information.
And that was the information that Phil Lum said he was going to get that to you?
Correct. I have not received that yet.
Okay.
So, but, no, I think we should go ahead with... I'm all for the cigar bar.
Thank you.
I'd be one of your first patrons sitting there smoking a Cohiba back there with you.
And we will have the cigars that you smoke back there.
Thank you.
If I can, Councilmember Caputa, the cigar bars that were listed were in the staff report that Mr. Lum prepared that was part of the planning and zoning. It should be in your packet. I don't... I shouldn't speak for the city clerk, but it should be in your packet, because there's a number of them that Phil listed in that report.
Would've been the original packet for the public hearing.
Yeah, way back in the original packet.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this? Seeing none. Councilman Parsons moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. We will move to public hearing number 1803013.
In accordance with Section 405 310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant Missouri and the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, March 26, 2018, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize a special use permit to Tire Zone LLC for the operation of tire installation and repair shop for the property located at 1940 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing, calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Hi.
Good evening. Please state your name and the address.
My name is Tony Alhajjoush, and this is my wife, Shante Alhajjoush. The address is 1940 North Highway 67. You guys probably most likely have the PowerPoint.
It should be coming on. Hold on just a minute. We're waiting for that to come on, so...
Take a moment. I guess it's on.
It should be on. That's what... We have it on here. They're coming to help.
It's plugged in.
Right. Are we plugged in?
Make sure the right cord's on there.
There we go. That helps.
There you go.
It's always something. Ah, there we go.
Okay.
Okay. As he stated, my name is Shante Alhajjoush, and I am his wife. I am going to actually take you guys through the layout for this particular business.
Okay. Ma'am, will you take the... You want to take the microphone out? Would that be easier?
Well, it's showing green.
No, we need to hear you while you're talking, so...
It'll stay green. I don't know why it's green, but it just...
Yeah, but the...
That's right.
Yeah, you're okay. We get it.
So this is basically the front view of the establishment. We just want to display that. This is the second view. This allows you to see the parking spaces for the business in the front. As you can see, there are two here. There's also three here. We don't plan on using this particular bay to have cars enter or exit the premises. And there are five additional spaces in the back, which you could see here as well. This is a 3D view of the interior. Cars will actually enter through Bay 1. As you can see here, there's a red door here that customers can exit their vehicles and go into the waiting area, which is here. This is a restroom in the back and offices. This is a back door to the outside. This is an area that takes you downstairs to the basement. This is a layout of the traffic flow. Cars will enter through Bay 1. They'll actually exit out of the back and go around the side of the business to exit back out to Highway 67. We did receive permission from the neighboring business that it was okay to use that space. And last but not least, this is the rear view. This actually will display where the trash receptacle will be. I know that was a question in the planning and zoning, and this just shows the rear of the business.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, one thing I'm hoping you guys will do is some trash receptacles on the inside and the outside, so when people are coming and going with their drink cups and stuff like that.
Yes.
That's not getting over the parking lot. We're trying to be very stringent on that, so stuff ain't blowing up down the neighborhood and neighbors ain't complaining and we don't have to go pick it up then.
Absolutely.
Another thing, do you guys own another tire business elsewhere?
Correct, in St. Louis City.
In St. Louis City?
Mm-hmm.
Now, is this going to be selling used tires, new tires, both or...
Both.
Both. Will they be changing all the tires inside the garage part and none in the parking lot, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Hanky?
Yeah, hi. Received you guys' email. I'm a councilman for this ward. Timmy asked a question here. Is the primary source of your business going to be new tires?
It's going to be both.
Okay, but if you run it now, do you know what the averages, percentages are of new versus used tires?
I think it depends on the case. I think it depends on the case. Right now, probably the percentage for used tires is a little bit higher, but it depends on the case.
Okay. And I was reading through the planning and zoning on this. There will be no tires stored outside?
Correct.
Okay.
The tires will be stored in the basement or in the, inside where Bay 2 is, but nothing will be outside.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Good evening.
Hi.
Will we be only doing tires? Are we doing oil changes, repairs, that kind of stuff?
No. This is only a tire installation and repair shop.
Okay, and what time in the evening will you be done working?
The times would be 8 to 7, Monday to Saturday, and Sunday is 9 to 2.
Very good, thank you very much.
Mr. Kaputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, did you say both used and new tires are going to be stored indoors and no tires at all will be stored outdoors?
Correct.
Okay, good. Because I know we have a lot of problems with, especially during the summer months with the tires, with the water sitting in the tires, and it becomes a nuisance safety with mosquitoes in there.
Yeah, no, no tires outside.
Good, thank you.
And the only exit through that bay is through this little, like corridor between your, the buildings?
Correct.
Now, does this driveway, is that your driveway, their driveway, shared driveway? Who owns this driveway?
I think the adjacent, the next door neighbor, the glass business owns that, and we've received permission from them to use that. That should be in your packets as well.
And he's still in that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none. Councilman Sayem moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is old business. The first item under old business is second reading. We have bill number 9370. Councilman Sayem moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Flower Valley Group LLC DBA Privileged Lounge to allow for the operation of a cocktail lounge located at 129 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Councilman Sayem moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Flower Valley Group LLC DBA Privileged Lounge to allow for the operation of a cocktail lounge located at 129 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
I lost the whole bill number. Bill number 9370 becomes ordinance number 8398.
Yes.
8398. All right, right. There we go. We'll move to bill number 9371. I will move for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Orders authorizing amendment to zoning code to allow for adult daycares as a special use in all B zoning districts.
Councilman Kaputa moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Orders authorizing amendment to the zoning code to allow for adult daycare as a special use in all B zoning districts.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Bill number 9371 passes and becomes ordinance number 8399. The next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under new business is board appointments. No, that was quick. We will move on to request. Councilman Parsons moves to accept the application for a request for transfer of special use permit number 7940 from Toast Time Lounge LLC to Toast It Up LLC, doing business as Toast Time Sports Bar for the operation of a cocktail lounge located at 12781 New Halls Ferry Road, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Councilman Parsons moves to approve a full liquor-by-the-drink license to Toast It Up LLC, doing business as Toast Time Sports Bar located 12781 New Halls Ferry Road, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Roll call, please.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the license is approved. Bills for first reading? We have bill number 9373.
Orders to authorize a special use permit to Tire Zone LLC for the operation of a tire installation and tire repair shop for the property located at 1940 North Highway 67.
Bill number 9374.
Orders to authorize a transfer of special use permit number 7940 from Toast Time Lounge LLC to Toast It Up LLC DBA Toast Time Sports Bar for the operation of a cocktail lounge located at 12781 New Halls Ferry Road.
Bill number 9375.
Orders to authorize an appropriation of $5,000 from General Revenue Fund to account number 4050 Professional Services for a contract for a speaker, Jason Roberts, of Better Block.
Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Kaputa. Discussion? Mr. Jones, did you want to talk a little about this, or me, or Mr. Kaputa, whoever? Oh, Mr. Kaputa's got his light on. Go ahead, Mr. Kaputa.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, recently, Mr. Jones, Ms. Pagano, myself, and the mayor attended the Missouri Municipal League Conference that was held at the Lake of the Ozarks, and this happened this, last year of September, and the main speaker that was speaking to all the municipalities was this man by the name of Jason Roberts. He gave a PowerPoint, and what he did in the city area of Dallas area, Dallas, Texas, was just phenomenal. He, the man had ideas that we couldn't, it was just, it was so easy what he was saying, and when we, once we heard his speech and his PowerPoints and everything, and it was just amazing of what this man has done to his, his city. And we are getting this man to come here and speak, and this would be a good opportunity for the city to see what this man, we're going to show him around the city and see what he thinks and see what we can, we can do to enhance our city and make our city go forward and some progress. So this is what this, this is all about, this appropriation of money. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Orders to authorize an appropriation of $5,000 from General Revenue Fund to account number 4050 Professional Services for the contract for Speaker Jason Roberts of Better Block.
I will move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Josh Polsky, 748 Loke's Drive in Florissant. I actually just watched one of his TED Talk. He was very interesting. I was just curious, will this be open to the public, or is this?
What we, right now, we're in discussion of how exactly we're going to do it. It may be that we have to limit it. We're having them in the theater. And so, we were going to get together with the council to see how many, like invitations that they could throw out to their residents, but I know Mr. Jones and I were talking the other night of trying to open it up on a first-come, first-served. We just don't know how, we just needed to sign the contract so we could have them on the date.
Gotcha.
So we needed to appropriate the money, so, but it's a worthwhile thing. He was in Texas, I believe, right, Texas, and just revitalize a whole community. And I think each one of us remembers the whole speech that he, that he gave, and it was like, we've got to get them here, because I think people would really be astounded at a vision that he had for a city and how we can achieve it. And I know everyone on this council has worked very hard to try to revitalize things, just update little things, and I think he would, you know, would be great. So yes, but soon, I mean, once it passes, our heads are going to be put together and we're going to figure out how exactly we're going to go with an invitation.
Okay.
Thing out far.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, Josh, since you're in my ward, Josh, I'll definitely keep you in mind.
Okay, thank you.
You betcha.
Mr. Kaputa?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yes, I mean, a little bit of follow-up with Josh said, this man has some TED Talks out there. I don't know if people are familiar with TED Talks. Very motivational speakers they have on TED Talks. It's total, you know, each person, there's a lot of people that do this, but this man does have some out there. I mean, this man has, in between when he was revitalizing his community, he found out he had cancer, and it was hard. I mean, the guy's amazing when you hear him speak. I mean, working to revitalize his city, plus dealing with the cancer thing, and come to find out he is, he is, he was cancer-free, is the last time we have heard him speak. So, this, I think this is a great opportunity for the city.
Mayor?
We will probably invite all of our boards and commission members, so if you want to guarantee your seat, you'll volunteer to be on one of our boards and commissions, and we do need some environmental quality commission members.
Good boy.
That is true, and I'm glad you brought that up, because those are the first ones that we were, were on our list. So, if you want to volunteer, you will definitely get an invitation. Hearing no further comments, clerk, would you pull the council for the final vote?
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Bill number 9375 passes and becomes bill number 8400, and I want to thank the council for that, only because I know you guys are, are going to love them, and it's going to be great. So we have bill number 9376.
Orders to amend account number 01434514 insurance account in the amount of $26,474 and appropriate the same amount to account number 4961000 for the replacement of a police vehicle.
Councilman Egan moves for a third reading. He was quicker than you, Mr. Shildroth. Seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Roll call, please.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Orders to amend account number 01434514 insurance account in the amount of $26,474 and appropriate the same amount to account number 4961000 for the replacement of a police vehicle.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak?
I come back, and Josh Polsky, 748 Loke's Drive, Florissant. I was just curious, so when the insurance company pays us, does it go into that one account, and then you have to transfer it over to actually, to purchase a car? I was just curious, that's all.
Yeah, that's it. Well, I think Mr. Egan's going to speak.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is basically a, more of a accounting situation where we can now take that money and buy the police car with it.
Oh, okay. That's all. Thank you.
Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Bill number 9376 passes and becomes ordinance number 8401. We have bill number 9377.
Orders authorizing amendment to zoning code to allow for the cigar bar as a special use in the HB Historic District, Historic Business Zoning District.
Councilman Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Sayem. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Orders authorizing amendment to zoning code to allow for the cigar bar as a special use in the HB Historic Business Zoning District.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this?
He's back.
Josh Polsky, if you didn't know, 748 Loke's Drive, Florissant. By allowing this, will that allow like a loophole for just regular restaurants to say they want to put a cigar bar in the restaurant?
I'm going to turn Mr. Hustle.
No, it will not.
Mike on, though.
It will not. You cannot have a cigar bar in a restaurant.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Sayem?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Bill number 9377 passes and becomes ordinance number 8402. Good luck to you, and thank you for your patience. Yeah, now you-
Now you've got to go back through the process again.
Right. Bill number 9378?
Orders amending Title II of the Florissant Zoning Code of ordinances by adding a new chapter 250 Indoor Clean Air Code.
Councilman Hanky moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Kaputa. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Orders amending Title II of the Floris, Florissant code of ordinances by adding new chapter, two-fifty indoor clean air code.
Councilman Hanky moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Roll call, please.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Orders amending Title II of the Floris and Code of Ordinances by amending, or by adding a new chapter, two-fifty indoor clean air.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this?
No.
You're good. It gets tiring going back and forth.
No question, Josh.
Hearing no further comments, clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-three-seventy-eight passes and becomes ordinance number eighty-four-oh-two.
Three.
Eight, two. Can we just do three? Three.
Three.
She was right, darn.
Darn it.
Four-oh-three. I haven't even wrote it down, that's even worse. Next item on the agenda is council announcements. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, just, um, like I normally say all the time, every council meeting, if you're a firearm owner, make sure you lock it up. We just had an incident over the past week, somebody having their firearm stolen out of their unlocked vehicle with the keys in their car. So I mean, just, you have to use, you have to be responsible if you're a firearm owner. If you're not responsible, you shouldn't own one. And another thing, Ward Four will be holding a Ward Four Neighborhood Watch meeting this Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, at seven PM, right here in the council chambers. So make sure you come up, participate in your neighborhood watch program, and get involved with your neighborhood watch program, make sure we keep our communities safe. Um, I would like to congratulate, uh, I guess, Show Me's and Saint Baldrick for what they did this past, or yesterday. It was amazing of what they had there. I mean, the place was packed all day long. It was a beautiful event, and they raised over thirty thousand dollars for, um, cancer for children. So it was a very successful event. Thank you.
Did you and Mr. Egan participate?
Thank you. Yeah.
We tried to get, we tried, uh, money, but nobody would give us any money to cut our hair.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you very much. You know, I was, I was doing laundry today, and echoing on what Jeff just said, and folding T-shirts, I have four T-shirts for, that speak to kids with cancer, uh, that I bought the last two or three years, that, that I, growing up, I never knew a, a child with cancer, maybe, maybe one over my entire career, and now this last two or three years, I've purchased at least four of these shirts that I fold today, because we haven't done laundry in a while, but, so I really...
You've been busy.
We've been busy. I really do echo what Jeff, and I know the other people there, I know Timmy Jones was there yesterday, and, and I, I saw the chief, I'm not sure who else from the council, and the administration was there, but it was a great event, and I really take my hat off to, uh, the people at Show Me's, and Kenny Green, and, and Nick, and, and Jeff, and all those people that have gotten involved in that. Secondly, uh, we just finished our Saint Ferdinand Charity Basketball Tournament, which is, which is benefiting Cooper Tracy, who is a Florissant boy with neuroblastoma and bone marrow cancer. And we had our last day on, on Saturday, and it was pouring down rain, it was absolutely miserable cold, and people told me we were going to take a bath, and I, I just felt we were going to have a good day, and we did, and we had a great day. People came out from Florissant all over the community and bought barbecue. And so hopefully, we'll get our bills paid and get some receipts in, and in a few weeks, we'll give the family a nice check to help them out. But from the bottom of my heart, it, it's a long five weeks that we do this tournament. Uh, the council, the mayor, the police chief, the police department, Eddie was a hit on Saturday. It just really, um, it was moving what this community did, and it made me more and more proud to be a member of this community. So thank you from, from, uh, from me personally. And finally, um, you guys may remember Michael and Katie Cardenas, they were up here during the Pitbull days we had, uh, they live in, in the area here, and Michael is getting ready to go on a mission trip to Mexico. He'll be leaving this week to serve, uh, the, the poor and the indigent in Mexico. He'll be going to Weekside, ask you to keep him. In your prayers for safe travels to and from, and for a successful mission, and keep Katie in your prayers, uh, she'll be by herself while he's gone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on Saint Baldrick's, which is great to see all the people out there, and, uh, I tip my hat to Joe Egan, you guys, he's, uh, worked up there for quite a few weekends at the barbecue. I've tried to come by and visit him as much as I could, uh, but I'm gaining a little bit too much more weight going up there eating that food with Joe, so, uh, I'm glad that everybody did come out, though, and I did stop by and see Joe soaking wet a couple times, uh, uh, over the last couple of weekends. Uh, another thing I'd like to bring up, a big shout-out to team, like I always say, uh, you know, when you got some, uh, extra canned goods, some change in the car, a couple bucks, uh, please run it down to them. Uh, spring is right around the corner, you guys, uh, and I know people are going to start getting back out in their yards again. Uh, I put you to the challenge, call us. Uh, that's what we're here for, that's what we're elected to do. Don't feel that you're bothering us, uh, and I hope everybody does some spring cleaning and start cutting their grass and cleaning up the stuff that's blew around all winter, the trash, the leaves, uh, just everything. And, uh, like I said, don't feel funny about calling us. Uh, we don't, uh, none of us turn around and say who called on us or nothing like that. We don't start neighbor wars, we just go after the problem. This is a very proactive council, so I'm sick of people kicking their kitchen tables at home, pick up the phone. Uh, i- if you can't get one of us, try another one of us. Uh, we're very proactive. Uh, like I said, uh, uh, I think every one of us is up to the challenge. Uh, call us, uh, that's what we're here for.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that, um, the city of Florissant is in the process of advertising and taking bids on the property known as the Shark Property, the, the pharmacy building, the building, uh, adjacent to it, and the adjoining property. That has been published. If you want more information, you can contact Lou Gerald's or go out on the website, but this Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, especially for council members that might be interested, the building will be open for inspection between ten and two. Uh, bring some walking shoes and some good flashlights, there's no electric in the building, but, uh, if you want the opportunity to look at it. Um, those that know, we purchased that more or less as a nuisance abatement several years ago, but we found that, that there may be some value to that building, it's a very, very well-constructed building, so we're going to be seeking, uh, sealed bids for that property, and anyone that's interested in taking a look, this Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, from ten to two, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, yes, I forgot to mention, um, I would like to wish my, both of my sisters a happy birthday, one turned seventy and the other one turned fifty-eight, so, my older sisters. But no, I would like to wish them a happy birthday and, um...
That's right.
And have many more.
You could have just wished them happy birthday. You didn't have to say the age.
Oh, I'll hear about it, I'm sure.
You should, you should. I'm on their side. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, as previously mentioned earlier, on, uh, Thursday, March twenty-second, my father, Robert Parsons Senior, passed away on his eighty-second birthday. Um, he had been battling multiple myeloma and dementia for about four years. When he was first diagnosed, I had no idea what multiple myeloma was, and, and what it is, is a rare form of cancer where the white blood cells in your bone marrow become cancerous, and it damages your bones, your immune system, kidneys, and your red blood cell count. There are various forms of treatment, including a bone marrow transplant, however, my father's advanced age disqualified him from any of those possible treatments. My father's relationship with God was very important to him. He was a high-character person. If he told you he was going to do something, then he would do it. There was no real gray area of right and wrong with him. He was also very trustworthy. Every church that he attended appointed him to the position of deacon and trusted him to be on the financial committee for that church. I recently spoke to one of his old coworkers that stated that he was never late for work at his job. He worked as a cook at Sunset Forty-four Restaurant, which back then was in Sunset Hills, but it's now in, uh, in Kirkwood. His coworker, who now owns that restaurant, stated that he was the last of the million-dollar cooks, because he had a nice house in Baldwin, and he always had a nice car, but you would never know it by the way he dressed or by the way he acted. Uh, my father was the foundation of our family, and he will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hanky?
Yes, I don't know how to respond after that. I'm just going to dive right into it. Timmy, you brought it up, and I'm surprised that you did, it's great, uh, because that's what I was going to talk about. I know it's spring, it doesn't look like spring at all out there. We're about six weeks away from the Valley of Flowers. Valley of Flowers is our premier event, in fact, you guys are right on the parade route, you're right in the front row there, okay? But it's, it's one of our premier events in the city, the thousands of people from all the, over Saint Louis area come to our city, and I'm with you, Timmy, we need to make a special effort this spring to clean it up, cut the grass, pick up the trash. We've got thousands of people coming from all over Saint Louis County area coming to view our city. Let's put our best foot forward. I know it doesn't seem like it now, but the time to start is right now, we've got six weeks to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. While we're on that subject, you know, we had the Trash Bash, uh, last Saturday at Sunset Park, that was the first cleanup event, official cleanup event. Uh, we also have, uh, paper recycling, uh, or, not recycling, but, uh, what do you call it?
Electronic April seven.
Electronic is April seven, what, no, the...
Twenty-first.
Shredding.
Shredding. Right, okay. So when you're done with your trash documents, uh, April fifteenth, uh, we'll have a, a free shredding event for residents, and then we have electronic, which is open to residents, uh, until eleven AM, and then it's open to non-residents after that. There is a charge for certain items, like, uh, large-screen TVs and things of that nature, it's a very nominal fee, but it'll help get that stuff disposed of properly. And, uh, Valley Flowers used to mean cleanup, spruce up, fix up, that's what it started for, and, uh, we're trying to go back to that, so I echo what the council member said. You know, uh, encourage your neighbors to do the same. Uh, you know, we have a Beautiful Home Award every year, and, uh, that's why we're featuring the winners in our calendar every year, because we're very proud of those individuals for the way they take care of their property. And we, we'd like to encourage everyone to try to get eligible for that, uh, for that recognition. You don't have to have the most expensive and the fanciest house in town, what we're looking for is somebody that's really taking good care of their property. I also would like to, uh, thank, uh, Joe and Andy Egan and their families, uh, for the great barbecue that we've been enjoying during the month of, month of March, and the money that's being raised, uh, every year they pick a different, uh, worthy cause to benefit. Uh, and we have a lot of that activity in this town, as, as we, as we, as we know, every week, there's, there's some, uh, activity to raise money for those less fortunate. Uh, we also had, uh, Historic Florissant had an event at Handel's yesterday, it was very well-attended, uh, to raise money for that organization. Uh, historic preservation is very important to this historic community, which is over two centuries old, and we have, uh, so many fine examples of architecture that has been preserved. Uh, we're going to be recognizing Kay Spring this, uh, this year in our walk-through history, she was a great preservationist. We have a couple of restaurants that got some recognition, I'd like to congratulate, uh, the Thai Kitchen, they were recognized by Riverfront Times as one of the best restaurants in, uh, in the Thai category, and also Handel's Restaurant was featured in Saint Louis Magazine as one of the best places for lunch, dinner, or Sunday brunch. Congratulations to those two restaurants. Um, since the last council meeting, I've been to Jefferson City again to testify this time for their three bills for transportation funding. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we have, uh, a, a long road to hoe, because there, there's a mindset of, uh, of no taxes for any reason, no matter what, even if there is chunks of concrete falling off of the overpasses and the bridges, even though we have the possibility of having to drive fifty or a hundred miles out of our way to get to our destination in this state in the not-too-distant future. Our state legislators, those that are not supporting this, need to wake up, because we have to have the infrastructure for us to have economic progress in this state. And so I'm urging everybody listening to this broadcast to contact somebody, a friend in any part of the state to contact their legislator, senator, or representative. We have a real chance to get this thing through this year, because we have, uh, a certain person is on the sideline, probably, somebody that was going to be against it, and now we have a chance to get this thing through. So let's take this chance, because we may not get it again.